I love so long.
Pretty fast though.
So I had to get the, the. Oxford's office.
Yeah.
This is all order. Today is April fifth, two thousand twenty-three. It is four oh one P M. We're here on Lethem and Freshery. Wednesday, twenty-fourth of February, second floor, two oh four. And then it's going to be Wednesday, May third, two thousand twenty-three at four P M. One Lethem and Freshery, second floor, building two oh four. Go ahead and swear in the staff. You swear your hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please station in the record. Commissions who are present on the left. Jeff Farrell.
Uh, Matthew. Matthew.
Then we're down to the, your. No item form. Moving down to the approval. Let's see that approvals. Staff approvals begin on. Ten of your agenda. Commissions. To review that list.
I think I'm good, yeah.
You're done? There are ten. Staff. Against. I say the motion passes. And then moving on to the approval for minutes from the last meeting, March first, two thousand twenty-three. Would you care if I move through? Second. Any question? Motion? Moving on to the application in force to its appropriateness. Item one. G B dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, zero, nine, zero, zero, nine, seven, six, five, eight, zero. Coming up in D C. You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
And please station in the record.
Rachel Herkule with M K S K.
Uh, this project is for landscaping in the basement and front yard, rear yard. In the front yard to install paper and planters along Cedar. Burger alley. The decorative fourteen downspouts facilities are included on the northwest and southwest former infrastructure. But please design. These sound subject to thick events. But with painted dark gray black color charcoals. They finish pan trunk six U, pan trunk L U, and two six feet. In the rear yard, construct a new patio patio with new lump, not favors, some sand setting. On aggregate base, gamers should be building brick well crest five sixty. The timbres install stone paper walkway along the east facade of new garage that will be accessed by a self closing lock gate. New, new plantings per minute materials. Install low voltage L A. Panels through the mid backyard that will now light the neighboring properties. Install self contained water feature. Install small L E D well wash light at the water feature which include. The shoveling version. Install L E lighting to apply new install very large shade tree inside. Inside the wall to the shade. Install. Waterworks and papers. The applicant was asked how they will prevent this statement. So the four ten, they can't revise their design to use a powder from the limit of for the planting border. Rather than the four, rather than the four ten, but the near, the material for the paper patio that changed. To handle the pressed paper in three colors were indicated as peach. Uh, staff recommends approval with any all clarification to be submitted to H B O staff for review approval prior to issuing the certificate. With the following. And that water is not be placed in the front elevation along Cedar and Burger Alley. Uh, the basis of staff recommendation. Is, um, three, one, one, six, six, three, standard improvements A. The German village guidelines exterior considerations fences and walls, two, three, three, four, five minutes. The German village guidelines exterior considerations for sunlight, street furniture, pools, fountains, and believe those one, three.
Anything else to add?
No, I just wanted to clarify that, uh, the paver change was due to availability, um, once we started to talk to the contractors. So that's the only. That's the only change. Aesthetic, I guess, to the owner. So we'll have to dress that up a little bit and. We can't take the. Siding lower elevation from what I'm told by the architect.
Excuse me.
In front of a planting bed, correct?
The, the plant bed is the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. Gee, I mean, and between it and the wall is our plant bed. It's going to be a race. Uh, with simple grasses along the front edge there. With simple grasses.
Still some dog.
Part of our impetus to. The planters along both Cedar Alley and Burger Alley was to. Kind of did. People pulling over too close to the house, uh, so people pass by in the alley, uh, because it is a tight corner there.
To try to sort of view it. It's too.
Yeah, I think. The idea of just to cut. Six hundred percent that comes from the sun. Uh, below the siding is the reason to make height that it is.
I just don't think that's appropriate. Guessing that value is probably stone or something.
It's. It's backstone and it's parched on top. Yeah. And the concrete parching. Uh, to repair it. Would be really extensive. It would get into repairing the wall below the foundation. The phone from my understanding, but then I have to for the architect on that.
I can do that also.
Different forms indicated by L, um.
Well, it's driven into the ground. It's going to be ready to get. The concrete.
That's triangle of wood.
Yeah. Addicted to that. Feet, obviously to keep up the tension and the strength of that. Edge.
There are geish.
I don't know if I can do that, but I don't have one. I, I question the durability of it. I question the appropriateness of it.
Yeah, we were going to work with Fortin on it for them to just. Um, so I can talk to them and get those answers and let them recommend the each. By drawings on the document.
Any concerns, any other commissions about that detail?
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. I have water concerns, but that's not for us. It sounds draining.
Yeah.
And what's it phrases? I mean, it's all going to push forward.
It doesn't have a bottom. It's just the ring of the planter.
With the three saw. It's got a hole. Yeah. Yeah. Is there no text on that? So we had a lot of empty blocks, a series of empty blocks across the face. Yeah, um, it would, it would be a rhythm. It would be a pattern. It would be a visual interest. I don't think this has any way of being dirt up against that. Don't think it's sustainable. I don't think it's going to last long. Um, I think it's a cop out of, of architectural structural issue in the foundation.
So if it was just. Front of foundation, I didn't.
I think, yeah, if it was down to grade level, inside level, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah.
The traditional method of landscaping is the height of the area. I think mistakes.
Yeah, go mine.
Owner would be amenable to either looking at that or going to a more, uh, furniture type planter that we would. Set. On surface and then the brick would just go up to the building as it exists now.
That would.
Yeah, I think we could suggest either one of those and they'd be amenable to one.
Sorry, I suggest you take this out of the application.
Okay.
And come back with that soon.
Okay.
And it could even.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That, I think that's what we're kind of going for. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we can make that amendment.
Do they have comments or concerns with anything else in the application?
Into. That they're going to amend it by taking out the, the edging twenty-four inch high edging treatment and associated landscaping. On the west side.
Well, it's on two sides, right?
It's on Burger and Cedar.
Okay, well, even more.
If they take it out. They need to come back with everything that they could look over the box floor.
They would, they would have to come back with that, yeah.
So while they, if we split it, that puts it separate. They have the application on the agenda.
No, I think.
I go through the.
My thoughts again. Good point.
If you have a process.
I'd like to. Make a decision and be done.
So, so if we split it.
Mm-hmm.
That keeps you on the agenda for next month and you could. And you don't have to go through another application on the process. If we amend it and just take it out.
Mm-hmm.
You have to resubmit.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's not do that.
Maybe it's, yeah, it's just possible.
I think that'd be great.
So we do. All motions to, uh. Split. Item one, G B two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, zero, nine. Item two. A. Uh, removing the planter box. As an application. On Cedar Alley and Burger Alley as I D and a remainder of the. Makes sense.
So.
Second.
So the planter box is B or planter box is A?
Planter box is B.
Okay, so.
Same A to, uh. And I D. Uh, some table. Was in favor. I. Against. I say that, that motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for.
They have to get that in and the other side is beyond the next.
Uh, that would be, uh, a week from tomorrow. That is, thank you.
Yeah. Item four, is it two, three, dash zero, two, dash zero, one, three, dash seven, twenty-five. Applicant for one. Third call for one twenty-five. Yeah. Settle. So please raise your hands. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Your name to the record, man.
Um, Taylor Hubeck, the German studio.
Mark Schiefer, landscape architect with Mark Schiefer Associates out of Gahan.
Thank you very much.
Uh, this is the. For the letter, we need to give them a formal basis of G D from these two, dash service six, spec zero, three, three.
Commission besides the water is not allowed to drain on central engineering data should be regulated from the trial yard. Commission requests a simple engineer's report with mathematical calculations showing the water would not run into neighboring properties. The size of the planting bed would collect water appropriately. And generally showing what would happen to the water in the yard. The engineer, the engineer report would let drilling holes would be necessary. Commission suggested applicant work with the engineer to determine how many holes, what size would be and elevation. The applicant submitted new materials to be placed on the April agenda. These materials include additional photos of the April agenda, Mr. Trump report from ADR associates. The report concluded that ADR and associates did not believe there would be a negative impact on the neighboring properties to be completed in isolation. At the April business meeting, the commission plus the applicant clarify the impact to neighboring properties. And how the engineer defines a negative impact. Commissioners advised the applicant they should come to the hearing prepared to answer intentional questions. Applicant for invasion letter.
He's on his way, so I'll meet him since I have not been here before. I don't know. So any questions?
Is it over the top of the concrete still?
Yes.
So. Remember this section. He had required purchase. We see the ten. Okay. Should consider whoever now should require that. I think it's a good bad thing. So that that reference in the guide on that. It refers to slide two. She blame the bed saying sometimes a concrete basis installed beneath the same bed. Last application of that had come up. It was argued that because it says sometimes a concrete base is installed beneath the same. Down sand. Look at the the last hearing. My memory serves. The the concern from the commission, the real concern was water. Property and we had asked for an engineer, this study to be done, professional study to be done about that concern. Which we have the report, report in the application, start of page four. All of that. It's older than there's such. There was one capable. I think it states that. It's the initial. And I do have a question for like considering this after the business meeting. And is one of the neighbors the perp with this commission? This question I have for us to think through because that is something. There are guidelines, there are other. So we have those thresholds. So we have a report, but for my consider that. In. Interpret.
It's a benefit to the applicant. Sherman, the water runoff in the table is not coming back. He's trying to redesign.
See recall kind of that. Remember the word. It shouldn't be. That's why we're taking on corporate businesses very kinds. So make sure to thank to the source and not to your neighbor bits. Hope you're not picking here. Sorry, thank you for that.
Condition is now just the concrete or is it the condition that you're proposing favors? Or does it not seem?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Sure, the engineers.
Is the proposal.
Just cock.
So I guess.
You're saying you haven't changed the drainage, it's as good or as bad as it was before.
It's going to what?
You haven't changed the drainage, it's as good or as bad as it was before.
Exactly, well, it's going to be a bit away because there's a planting bed that intercepts part of the drainage. Uh, and there's been some discussion and there is dirty line from the neighborhood probably drains on there to resolve that issue. So. But the amount of water that was there before will be less only because of that. The planters are going to be absorbing that water.
Explain the drain line that. Explain the line that.
So if you look. It's certain it could for me, please. Uh, there's red, the red house to the pictures. To the property. To the listener. Go down another one if you would, no. Like, as I saw it. There it is. So there it is. So that's been draining, draining on property heads there. So that water will be still working and falling into the planting bed that will now better, better absorb it with the plants that are also in there. And get it to flow more readily to the alley and be taken care of. And yeah.
Any questions or comments on the applications? Are none? To approve. I'm bored.
Any question on the motion? All those in favor? Guest present.
For a present motion passes.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Members of the board, thank you.
And it's a small one. By empty, by empty.
You're seventy five. To match as closely as possible to the same dollars in terms of the house. Then some people. They've been repelling. The staff that handles. The mark for the state of the condition. There are. Indicate on the site plan, information on the base and paper has happened. The number of stations are well armed installation right on the. It's not visible from the public right away. And installation in the rear size that. Is for it is very, very near the backboarded. The application was continued in marks through the applicant's apps. Saying the mission book can show those side by side with the before and after photos. To clarify which fencing areas have been replaced and bright light specifications for the lighting required. And the applicant has provided updated materials. Staff recommend, uh, the staff, staff recommends that commissioner offers feedback and to the application. To allow the applicant time to provide updated materials, but including the light spec information for lighting on the pergola picture here. The basis for the staff recommendation is three, one, one, six, one, three standards for site improvements, A. German village guidelines fences and walls, three, four, five and six. German village guidelines for site lighting, street furniture, pools, foundations and gazebos, two and three.
Anything else to add? Um, I just want a clarification, did the information about the lighting not get included in what I sent? I thought I included it.
Um, from the packet we downloaded from the Google Drive, there wasn't the lecture.
Forgot to update that, my apologies.
Uh, any questions, comments in the commission? Try to correct, guide, guide this. Um, so looking at what's been presented. Perma was existing, it's just been repaired in kind. Um, the landscaping in the rear, it's all fenced in, basically. So they were taking half the flags was taken out, paper was put in, uh, with few changes to the landscape design. From the commission standpoint, there any, any heartaches or problems with the landscaping being done inside the fenced in rear?
I don't believe so for me.
Um. From tackle the, the alley side, the garage. Applications identifying. Distincting busted concrete apron being replaced with pavers similar to what's been installed back there, correct?
Yes.
The mission standpoint, any issues with those paper being used on the alley stuff I freely confirm.
These are concrete papers, correct?
That's great.
Which we don't allow.
The, the pavers have also been specified in the package, so. And one of the supplements that I provided.
Generally speaking, um, the commission. Doesn't approve, um, concrete pavers, replace brick. Existing concrete or replacing it in kind would be like, like for like condition. I think that is one, one of the pieces of commission. Speaker would adhere, but would have a struggle with putting those concrete papers that typically would not allow in public spaces in that location. And then I think the other piece is from the front side of the property. Those papers being on the public side of that fence, being in the front. Brick was there, brick was removed, papers. Put in typically we'd approve. Those paper. No problem. That is. Pavers there. Probably over the.
I was looking at the brick that got ripped out and replaced by concrete papers.
There the, then there's the radar mitigation system. It was a whole thing, it paid to hide the light, I think that's an easy solution.
Agreed.
There are major, one other major contention, commission.
My other question is there, there is the fence that seems to have the.
Right.
Is that a new fence or is that?
Yeah, so the. Uh, my neighbor, two of us, which you're seeing fence there. It's the fence and then one, um, in the, in the southeast.
By the garage.
Sorry, swept by the garage, replaced it with the truck.
Yeah.
I had nothing to do with that.
Okay, so that wasn't.
No.
That's like. So. The brick walk going up to.
No offense there before.
Okay. What came to? His questions, is there anybody in favor of the brick or the paper? Everything. So I thought I was going to take the papers. And the application for the papers. Front of the garage, write that out. Sounds like the commission is on board with everything else in the application.
Yeah, it's a defense.
Yeah. We could, we could vote and approve that and give, give, give it his way on that part and we can do it and then we can address.
Not mainly twenty, we usually do this. Exit that party construction or something. This is all in place.
This doesn't change anything. True. That one.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I have absolutely no problem with. Things in parts of people go ahead with a part of it and connect, connect the rest of it.
There's no, no negative impact. Uh. Simple heads and put brick papers back in front. Unless there's some other option you want to present.
No.
David, it's. If you don't like to see us all go in. Which we have.
We, we've allowed concrete on new construction.
Is there a requirement with the kind of brick? Got it. That's. It's the. But you can, you can say it all. Well. Yeah. Reap. Well. So the option that are. Concrete or prepared.
A wall?
Yeah. For paper, for paper.
With the flags on them.
For the flags.
The flags have been removed. Some concrete pavers are out of the concrete. Uh, apron is not. Just to be clear. Okay.
The. Danger.
Okay.
My, my vision, want to pull that gate forward to, to reduce the amount.
Um, it would involve. I guess another fence, right?
More fence.
More fence. Is that something that they're?
Pull back to the face of the house. Where you put the gate.
This is for the grass that I brought.
Oh, the bright side, sorry.
I will bring that gate straight back off the face of the road. No factory line. They want that, just hitting a little bit of papers that are not private. Minimize the rework of the papers. On the front side. At the four four, the side houses, we asked that the, that the gate be set back behind the first window.
Okay.
But that would eliminate some of that work.
Um, so that's an option I think I'd like to explore, so I guess that means we should continue, I mean, we should.
A couple options for you to try and minimize.
I appreciate that.
Yep. Motion to continue, item GV dash two, three, dash zero, three, dash zero, two, two, second. Question, motion. Was there? Yes. I stand upon the essence.
Get bigger done. Make her done.
Makes sense for it.
Yes.
I guess you have to. Item six was withdrawn on. Moving item seven, GV dash two, three, zero, four, to zero, one, two, seven, seven, one, two, seven, three, nine, South Thursday. Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand. Please hit enter.
BJ Lee.
Very much.
Uh, the proposed work description is landscaping for. Those were first, which is starting on November first, twenty twenty three to March thirty first, twenty twenty four. The winter vest will be ten. February and to February fifteen inches wide by sixty inches in depth. The vest will be. Boarding located to be in more elevation. Staff. Analysis of this. For some reason. These are the half of Canada's. Since the parameters of their current festival, which have been approved in the past two years. And the material is the same as previously approved. It's a fireproofed flag. Uh, staff recommends approval with any all clarifications recently passed. Our information that our festival was possibly a kit. The basis for staff recommendation is that the proposed workers generally consistent with uh, three one one, six, one, three standards for site improvements, A. Enter guidelines, entryways, approaching closed, such as six, two, five, and six.
Anything else ahead?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
We've never asked this before. We've never asked before. From you guys before. How is this attached to the pilasters?
That's. Pilaster's on the wood.
Okay, thank you. GV one, two, seven, three, nine, south road three.
Paper. Yes. I stand up motion passes.
Thank you very much.
See you next year.
I will say, we have another one right now.
Uh, next item is item eight, GV dash two three dash zero four dash zero one three, seven, three, nine, South Thursday. Good record show.
Uh, this is for landscaping, uh, for patio, to install a temporary patio. The patio space to be nine feet by thirty feet. The patio installed April first through October first, twenty twenty three. Sure, and uh, this involves removal of the temporary vest stool that was approved as GV twenty two dash ten dash zero two one. Uh, temporary red iron pens to be schoolhouse style. Uh, temporary brush and pipe anchored to brick pavers. The brick pavers are to be replaced like for like in exact same shape and color. Uh, match the adjacent existing sidewalk upon removal of the patio and, and the fencing. Uh, any new base under the bricks to permeable. Uh, no awnings or umbrellas to be installed. Um, the app staff analysis, the applicant has been approved to install the same patio into twenty twenty one. As GV twenty one dash zero four. The commission asks. When they remove the patio, they replace those bricks. And they extra as, as I. Uh, staff recommendation is that staff recommends approval with any and all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for good approval prior to engine certificate. The basis of the staff is that it's generally consistent with C, uh, with three one one. It's one base, you know, it's A. And staff would also like to ask if. The commission would give comments on, um, if this could be a future staff approval of this the same.
Anything else to add? I'd appreciate that. The topic going to step approval in the future. Speaking of, speaking of, it is as much of a point of a pleasure it is to see the applicant every, the applicant every way. Probably something. Unless it appears.
I think it's still our responsibility to approve it. On that, please be by attendance. I think, I think staff can bring up. I guess the same. The minimum.
Application is saying.
It's a renewal. It's a renewal.
Yes.
Do you still need that? Do you want to consider anything else? I mean, just to be safe.
And we would just wait.
Yeah. What is it? That's like, that's just trying to look at the worst case scenario.
There are a. Motion. Any questions on the motion? There, aye. Conditions, okay.
Well, this. He can staff assets. Another instance where he said, no. Yes.
Uh, who can test item? The town of two, three, zero, four, dash, zero, one, four, seven, one, five, Mobile Street. Once you're all settled. You can bring another chair up. Perfect, thank you. You understand. Uh, no raise your right hands. No raise your right. Your name, director?
Uh, Glenn Evans, homeowner.
He.
With urban water architect.
He.
Appco is.
He.
Um. The proposed work description is an exterior building alteration to replace. To replace two deteriorated French doors in the rear addition. You mark the mark of the French door sized to match existing. To add two marble living public cases from the south of the north elevation of existing. To replace the deteriorated door siding with a new smooth cement board siding to match existing profile. The same thing seems to actually. The wall doesn't sound. Change. More than. Over the second year, please. To be.
The end.
Um.
Doors.
And the new windows. And then top.
The.
Okay. I didn't know it was built on this in nineteen eighty. You know, it doesn't. So we just want to add some of this to the north elevation. Um, so we just sort of, um, have. Existing siding is, is deteriorated, so we like to, is. And even on the ninety four edition. The French doors on the west elevation. Um, the frames. And some of them have been painted shut and some of them have been painted sort of open. Rails don't need, so it's, you know, the lot. Um, they have storm windows that. Are in really, really bad shape. So. Um, so. Let. Or Glenn talk also about this, but. Um, we have saved many, many windows in. It's sort of structures. Um, and in this. We're going to be much better off replacing windows. No.
All interglotters. Our granddaughter is trying to our house. And we had a incident. It's like a big town. She said, lock herself in the bedroom. They said, and she panicked and realized this was a fire. So. Thinking this, everything happened on Sunday. You know. Type our, our four year old ran that to the front. No, no, she did. She saw someone walking in, a person, she didn't see both hands and. His ass. Have a proof of failure. They're not safe, you're brave. You're gonna get caught like that. Uh, this next week, we can, we can, you know, we can make this a lot better. We're going to spend more on that. We're going to spend more on the renovations. In the next. We're gonna have us back in the house, just. You can just, that's what, safety is really important, the aesthetics, but also when. From window, you're not being in the world, things are changing. Energy, climate footprint, and as much as you try, you still want windows, you're not going to make them. It's energy, it's energy efficient as the windows ever. So. I hope things. That's important.
And he was a, you know, expert at restoring windows, look at them, see whether they could be repaired to work.
Yes, um, just a couple of comments with regards to that. Um, I think the, the first point. Is the evidence, they, they, they get three jump, three. Things of product. Um, that's number one. Number two, I think that one of the things that I would like to do today is give the commission some sense of. Uh, the lack of tradespeople that are available to do this type of work. Um, it is a serious situation. I've been in the business for three years. Uh, we've, we've put a lot of, uh, windows in the village. And I think that it's important for the commission to realize that. Um, the expertise to do the right work on these windows. It's very, very difficult to find. And, uh, perhaps you have a list of approved people that do that. I suspect not. But, um, I, I, and, and, you know, what, what we're talking about is, is providing a product. That is approved by the commission. So I think that far to summarize, it's the wishes of the architect and the owner to bring everything. In the whole, I'll be same spec level. And perfectly, um, all three.
Anything on windows. And were they better? Yes. They form, there's more satisfactory that you went to open them, you could open them, no, you'd pound on them, you'd pry on them. Um, so I do have experience in the past doing it and spending more, like, like it's like. It's like more money, I had to release them. So I'm, I'm very. Turn. The house we had at the. Commission, these were compared to.
Like that, one more comment, excuse me. Um, Brad, Brad, you know, we, we could call it to look at these situations all the time. And we probably could save the commission a lot of time if we had a better sense of what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. Because there's been a number of homes where the commission has proved, not where the original windows were candidates for replacement. So I think that would also be helpful moving forward as well. So is there anything about the situation with the windows in this house? That couldn't be said about now? Almost all of the windows is for windows in. Of deterioration, of rot. Uh, and, and, you know, what level, I guess, is an acceptable level to replace?
I would like to, I'm trying to. Both houses that were built the same time as ours, one to the left, one to the right. We have new windows. No commissions change and, and criteria change and, and I appreciate what you're doing. I know it's. We're talking about shop, but I look to the left, I look to the right, I look across the street, like down the street. I, it's, it's, it's pretty, when we bought that house, we, we found the criteria. A lot of research before with the house. I felt pretty confident based on what we know and what we've seen, but these were in pretty bad shape. So that, I think that's what he's asking is, is, I can read the, the, the line in the, that says. I, the basis says replace, replace or replace basically. So, but that's how it's always been, and we've been there in eight years, so we've seen it different levels.
Sometimes it must seem like there's punishment for having a house where the windows have been better maintained.
Well, they're not, they have, this house isn't, if you would see the house. This house, the house, it's been maintained. Bathroom's not working. We bought it as is, but this house has not been maintained. Right now, we just won't buy it when the shutters are kids blown off. So we are going to get this house up to. It's blown up to what you'll be proud of to see, just like we did the last one, but this house is not being maintained.
In the past, our window assessment criteria is like. Thirty percent of. Carried. Care. And there was evidence of previous repairs and maintenance versus the. The windows that were deteriorating for twenty years.
I, I, I believe based on the history that there was a period of time that the previous, I'll be sitting there and she could no longer take care of things. And. And that. The, the, the paint on all of this and on all of this under paint, you know, we can, so we can do all kinds of things. Um.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt that.
And. We. Um. In my experience, in different houses in German village, which have fixed windows, where there's not. Everything on every window that needs to be addressed. So I understand you can. All of those things and strip the lead paint and, but it's every single one and. Some I think are much worse than others. And then we would still have to put, we would still ask to put a new storm window on. To replace the storm windows that look pretty early.
With respect to the, the. The, you know, uh, expert. We face things like this for other things such as slavers and things like that. We usually ask that there is an expert, but it was not somebody who is being contracted.
Yeah.
Uh, and there, we do not have a list, but Columbus Landmarks has a list of window restoration contractors. Um, so I think, uh, before we would get to a place where we, a place where we would feel comfortable with this, we would love for you to reach out to some of those experts. Bring them in and perhaps have them provide a report that we can receive and see. Allow them to provide their opinions on whether or not these are restored or whatever. I am. As in the stage. Uh, the storm coming and thinking about replacing the glass, that glass is. Um, but I think that that would be helpful for us to have a report from an independent person from that list of us. The words. Or for. I'm sorry. For staff. Backing to. Were just, um, six. So. Names that were. I don't see. Promising. Uh, I do know that, that pays high school. Landmarks, uh, to. To try to get straight. Saying they're. There now. Um, but that's, that's all for me. Uh, to the, the issue of, of safety. What you're talking about, I had a dog who broke one of the, since when he was getting excited as well. Um, one thing I found, uh, uh, market. Name, the name of it, but they're basically. Storm energy put inside, um, that are kind of pressure fit to. Um, that are kind of pressure fit to, to the frame, that can be a barrier. It's, it's a polycarpeted. Lazy product, so it's not going to crack or break. Um, so that is something you can do on interior treatment. Um. And I try to be sensitive to the applicants. I've replaced, I've restored windows myself, but not everybody has that type of expertise. Don't. Yeah, uh, but windows are part of our fabric system. Of our, of our. Securing interior, he breaks all the technical manuals, everything. Repeat as much as possible, it's definitely is a high priority in the regulation. Yes, thanks. Well, I'm excited for this, I'm excited for this. We've been able to achieve financial feasible, that's a different conversation. We don't take franchise hardship into account on the first pass after that. It's a whole separate criteria, a whole separate background of information of what needs to be put together to make that case. Um, I don't think the commission has any issue as, as staff stated of the non-original windows. Think that's a slam dunk, replace all those, um, unless there's.
I can understand which ones will have an origin.
Yeah, I think that's, verify which ones are original versus not, but the non-original, I think we might have issued advice on those. Just the original ones that we have a hard.
I do have a question, sorry if it's a quirky question. Um, replacing the glass, I know the waviness of the glasses, is, is that an option?
Yeah, that's the only one kept him. And typically stash comes out, you strip off the old, probably replace the glass with plain flat glass, plate glass.
It's clear.
Yeah, why's that?
The line is clear, not tinted.
Yeah.
But can you do, you, can you replace them? Is there a safety glass or something that you can replace with?
I mean, you could put every glass there.
Or a lamp.
And. Say, we're not concerned with waviness of glass unless it was. Last fall, we know to have that true. It was just, well, no, that'll. A lot of the way that she's seen our glasses, just, she's. Yeah, and I will. And. A little bit of day job here because it's the, we can get the same arguments every time, um, about energy efficiency. I totally. Totally understanding that as well, uh, as I'm looking, I know I'm thinking about what are the options for sore pictures to try to help with those types of things. Uh, we get the same arguments about what we want consistency through, and so I. Uh. I, I will let you know, at least from my perspective and, and, and the ability to try to be fair. I don't think we're treating this application anything that we have, and then sometimes there are windows that are replaced that we need to prove. We don't always get those caught, it's like. A lot, a lot of the places that you're seeing out there are, windows got replaced some time in the past with a product that reset its life. Uh, or done without approval in the first place, back in the day, um, final windows that we are more than happy to get, take it out. Um, so. It's case by case basis, and, and I can't just say that everything you see is new, we approved, replacing with, with new windows. A lot of it was, it got replaced somewhere along the line, the origins were gone, and now they're replacing non-origins with, with new. It's a case by case basis.
Okay, so. Moving forward, if we could provide a, uh. Report from somebody who does window restoration, you would take that into consideration?
Right, staff's already said they're repairable, so.
Staff's.
Staff's point of view, so.
I would suggest maybe an agreement for some of the commission members to go look at it most.
We can do that.
Having, having an expert that does wood window restoration, giving their, their opinion, I think would be beneficial. One's good, two's better, but.
Yeah, and, and as I said, we've. We, I have worked on projects where we, where we have restored windows. Most of the time. We're more successful when, when those windows being operable isn't important. Um, and in this case, that is, that is much more important than some of my other clients. Um. So we can do that, we.
And we can split the application to get parts we needed for it then.
So then, Ned, if you, the. Windows that I think staff was recommending that we can replace are on the one-story nineteen ninety-four addition.
That's what I assume.
And on the, what I assume was a side porch where there's three windows with transoms. And then those French doors on the back that are. Deteriorated. As well as exterior siding, uh, replacing the board and battening siding and fixing the. Deteriorated trim on the garage and the, and the house. That would help us to move forward and.
So with all that conversation, um. A recommendation is we separate out. The original windows into their own application, that way it stays on the, on the agenda moving forward. Everything else we put on a separate application that we can vote on now to get you part of the way there at least. Uh, then we can deal with, with those. Original window issue at the next, once you're able to get more information. Is that work for you alls?
Yes.
I'm gonna do a motion to split then.
Motion to split?
Uh, motion to split GB dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, one, four. Uh, making the replacement of the original windows, windows item B and the remainder of the work item A. Is there a second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
Against? I say that motion passes. Motion to approve item GB dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, one, four, A. Second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
Against? I say that motion passes. Motion to continue, item B.
Second.
Any question on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
Make it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just for clarification. How long do we have to get you, get staff information on a continued application?
You have a week into, a week or tomorrow.
Could the staff provide those references, uh, with regards to the tradespeople that do those repairs?
Um, we can only give you the direction to go to Columbus Landmarks, we can't provide any list of contractors.
Just a question. You guys aware that some of these windows are pinned?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that, I think that there's also. Different eras of the original windows. Cause some of them have those little dial, those pins, and then others don't, and.
I'm, I'm gonna guess that the previous residence was a elderly woman, somebody pinned up for.
Oh.
We had my mother's house done, that's how I, I recognize what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving ahead to item number ten. GB dash twenty-three, dash zero, four, dash zero, one, five, three oh seven, East Columbus Street. Applicant for three oh seven, East Columbus Street. Last call for three oh seven, Columbus Street. That one, item for eleven is E. Deniers. Oh, sorry. Well, that one choice.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, oh, staff. Didn't. I don't, he's a commissioner, he doesn't.
Uh, no, I'm the commissioner, I'll, I'll, I'll sort it anyway.
Okay, do you, some of us want to tell the whole truth? No, and all that?
Yes, I do. Anthony, are you still?
Um, the proposed work description, um, this is a new construction and alteration to an approved addition. This is a modification to application GB twenty-two, dash zero, two, dash zero, one, three. Posing to combine, um, three, six, four and three, six, six Jackson into a single residence in lieu of expanding three, six, four Jackson. The new proposal eliminates the addition on the north side of three, six, four Jackson and instead extends the second floor extension across the entire rear of the house. The existing second floor bathroom dormers and surrounding shed roof to be removed. Walls be framed out to the extent of the first floor below. Design essentially the connector piece of the original three, six, four proposal, but also mirrored onto the three, six, six side. No additional footprint to be added and reusing the existing door openings into historic brick, no new openings in existing exterior wall imposed. Uh, there are, uh, providing three design options, option C is preferred. Um, option C is to include a new gable, gable dormer on the rear north elevation. With new windows from the improved window list and the roof materials from the improved shingle list. A new gabled second story addition on the first floor additional on the north elevation. Materials include a standing seam metal room, siding to be best to steel siding, a smooth, a smooth five inch reveal and four, six, three coal. Sherm to be painted seven oh seven nine iron ore. New windows on the addition to be from the improved window list, dummy windows in the northeast corner for the addition. To maintain and refinish existing windows in the first floor of the existing addition, the existing doors and light fixtures to remain. Staff analysis, um, after your focus this meeting, the commission discussed and determined this may be better as a conceptual application. And also request the year of the shed roof and that the sand bar maps be included in the materials packet. Staff informed the applicant of the commission's recommendation for the application to be conceptual. Um, but also informed the applicant that staff consider their application complete. Applicant chose to remain and request for action and provide the sand maps. Uh. If, uh, staff recommends that if commission, uh, that the commission approve any of the three options provided to be used in the test case. Because the, uh, petrarch ominous best of steel siding, M E G. Fanalic paneling or some sort of paneling. The applicant will be using the petrarch ominous fresh stone and graphite for panel walls and best of steel siding in iron stone for the horizontal siding. Uh, staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of any all clarifications submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issues of condition, with the following conditions. Based off the previous commission, commissioners' conditions from March twenty twenty-two hearing to make the best of steel product the test case. For final material selection of windows and asphalt shingles to be submitted to HBO staff and final review and approval. Uh, basis for staff recommendation is three, one, one, six, eleven, standards for alteration nine, ten and twelve. And three, one, one, six, twelve, standards for new construction, A, D, E, F and I. German rule guidelines for additions, uh, to.
Can see a painting there?
Uh, yeah, so, um, option C is the option we'd like to propose on. Um, we included option A and B just as a, as a, um, exhibit showing other roofing types, what that would do engaging with the primary structure. Um, and felt that, that the option C was the most appropriate of the three. Uh, it's all due to head height, uh, how do we engage back there? Um. So, as the application stated, the idea is to take the footprint of the first floor, just extend it up to the second floor. Want to retain that roof edge line of the original shed roof, um, to, to show the historic nature of what was there originally. Um. The current bathroom dormers on the rear on the second floor, uh, you can flip the photos of the, that condition. Um, it's a rubber flat roof. Pretty shoddy, how it's connected, that's been there for longer than I've owned the property, twenty-ten prior. Um. Got problems with, with water drainage, so the idea is to, to put that, that pitched roof running north-south. For the ridge line. Um, try not to engage any more of the principal roof than what we're already engaging, just to mitigate that. We've proposed putting a dormer up on the, the rear facade of the property, uh, really to, to help with the engagement of that, the, the peak of that pitch. Uh, where it connects the prime principal structure. As far as materials go, um, got a little confused with what was proposed, we do propose the, the metal siding, the best of metal siding. Uh, we're not using any of the other materials, that was from the original application, so it's just simply the, the smooth metal siding. Steel, steel siding. Open to questions?
Quick clarification, Anthony, you just got the, the picture of the rear of the house?
Yes.
Is the existing chimney that kind of splits the dormer?
Yes.
In the drawings, it seems to. Be drawn, go back to option C.
The elevation is incorrect, it's centered, um.
Back, all the way back up against, right?
No, no, it's, it's centered in the footprint of the, of that rear addition.
Okay.
The dormers extend from the, the rear facade of the, of the tall structure up to the chimney.
Yeah. That picture here, it just appears like that dormer is all the way up against.
Yeah, the dormer extends from the, the back of the principal tall portion and it extends out to the chimney.
I see.
It touches the chimney.
So you're, you're encapsulating this existing dormer, then, got it?
Yes.
How old is that dormer?
I, so I went up there, um, poked around, there's beams dated from two thousand and three. Um, I don't know if that dormer was original, can't get really any good evidence of showing it's original. Uh, my guess is that got cut in to the existing framing that's up in the roof. Uh, back in two thousand and five, when there was some work done, not sure if there's an application in file on the property from back then. But that's when the properties converted from a duplex to two condos, it's now back to a duplex. Uh, if you look, I, I took some photos, didn't submit them, but, um, the roof sheathing. If you look at the, the overhang on both east and west side, you can see it changing and sheathing from, from the typical beadboard. Uh, two more, I think six, one by sixes, uh, at some point. Up in that attic kind of crawl space, you can see that there's different coloration of the boards, some have been replaced over the years. And it's pretty spongy walking across it, so it's all going to have to come off and be replaced anyway. The roofing material was, uh, slate as of eighty-four. And then sometime before two thousand and five, it got converted to asphalt shavings. So assuming that's not the original roofing material back there.
And option C is your choice?
Correct. It engages the principal roof, the minimum, as small amount as possible. Try getting it down, um, and just, we can't get it down below that, uh, that eve overhang.
But, but you're not intersecting the eve overhang anymore than what.
It is currently there, correct.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Which is why I'd like to see better than any of them.
Yeah. As far as the, the dormer goes, the, the cheek walls of dormer, we're not set on how wide that wants to be. Um, really, it's, it's trying to just mitigate any kind of. Conditions with the engagement of that, of that new addition peak. So it could get narrower, it's on the rear elevation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I've got with the dormer is the fact that it. It, um. The hip, the existing hip disappears because you're. You're putting a dormer right on that edge, and I, but I don't know if that's important or not.
You clarify what the material would be. Would they be wood?
Um. Yeah, it'd be wood.
So the mass, the other one.
Max, yeah. Would look like essentially you got shutters closed. Which we've seen elsewhere at the village.
That's just to make it look balanced?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we looked at some, some asymmetry and just didn't, didn't quite fit, just couldn't get it to look right with the interior, it's gonna be bathroom space.
So palatable.
Fit?
They said it's so palatable.
Jeff, any comments?
I like it better than what we've previously approved.
It's less expensive.
On this property or on this project?
My goodness.
Yeah, the quotes for the original were coming in.
Any, any discussion about the material in the test case? Is that, this material that you're proposing any different than what was the original one?
No, it's, it's still that same smooth steel, that deciding.
There's no staining issue with that?
Nope, it's, uh, it's got a, uh. Kynar finish on it, fifty-year warranty unfinished.
Thirty-eight year?
Something like that.
It's a test case.
It's a test case.
Two, six, oh, five.
Thought was it's on the rear of the property, can't see it from the street, and an opportunity to get a material in that's. Smooth as, as the commission typically likes to see on the siding. Um, it's good, longer life to expect to see, it's a little on the higher price end, but. Looking for alternatives.
Windows, where the dummy windows, you want?
It comes down to the interior space, um, it's gonna be basically. So you're going to have with a condition of, of wet coming up against windows, so.
Tricky detail they do with that, that new material, how it works.
Yeah. Thought was it basically frame out like a window and just have those shutters.
Go right out, but it's all look.
Okay.
Anything else?
Grabbing lunch though?
I'll try a motion here. Item, GB two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one, six. Motion to approve. Should note that the applicant has noted that the W windows will be trimmed out like existing windows or like the real windows and that the switch best of steel siding is being approved as a test case.
Missing second.
I question about the W windows. Is this just a service supply decoration?
Detail wise, let's figure out how we're going to do it. There's going to be no interior window, so.
Framing or anything like that?
No, we're going to just kind of trim it out as if.
Basically shutters?
Yeah.
Okay. Dave, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
All details go to staff.
Moving ahead, item 12, GB dash two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one, seven, five, nine, five, South Third Street. Raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name and address.
Randy Roberti, Cameron Mitchell, Restorant.
Thank you very much.
The proposed work description, this application is filed separately from application GB twenty-three dash three eight four dash zero zero eight, which was staff approved under the staff approved items. It's for landscaping. The locust tree was approved for removal in GB dash twenty-three dash zero four dash zero zero eight. The tree was removed during a tree death imposing a safety hazard to people on the site and surrounding community. Arbor's report is included. This, the landscaping now is to plant a fifteen to eighteen foot tall replacement tree to plant in its place either in elm or zelkova. The staff analysis is that at the April business meeting, the commission had no comments or feedback for the applicant. Staff asked the applicant to clarify how the tree removal impacted approved design. The applicant clarified the approved design remains the same. The only difference is a smaller tree and the same implication as their tree. The staff recommendation is that staff recommends approval with any all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issues of the certificate. And the basis for staff recommendation is 3116 thirteen standards for site improvements A.
Any questions ahead?
I think that covers it.
Questions, comments from the commission?
My only comment is I wish we could do something where people would stop taking trees down before they got to the commission. I don't think that's what would happen. Thinking people are going to continue to do it.
Well, we reached out to staff and did receive a COA for removal of the tree before we took any action.
Receiving our first report that says it's an emergency, it's going to fall prior to. But the commission had that as a new, has to come back.
So this is on the issue of what, the tree replaced or not becoming down?
The commission is that the new tree replaced. The tree coming down is due to the arborist report that says.
Right, so we shouldn't even be voting on that.
No, trees are been approved for removal, so the application right now is for the tree.
Right.
But the tree removal was approved.
Yeah, okay, I'm glad you clarified that. I was glad I asked.
Wanted to make sure that was.
The replacement tree, is the fifteen feet to eighteen foot its mature height or the size you're putting in?
So it's a, it's a fourteen inch diameter, fourteen inch, four inch diameter trunk, eighteen feet tall, plus or minus, obviously it's a regular. Zelkova is the species we're, we're intending to install, install, plant. Elm's the alternate option. If, if there's a preferred species, I mean, we're, we're open to, to whatever the commission feels appropriate, but our landscapers seem to think the zelkova would, would fit the aesthetic. What's that?
Our landscape architect is not here today, has recommended that zelkova.
Has he? Okay.
Yeah, zelkova is getting about fifty, eighty feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like it's going to grow, they grow quickly, so it's going to, it's going to quickly mature. They get very big to, to compare to what was there. And it's, it's, you see a lot of them around there, so it fits right in.
I was recently schooled on this, that you actually don't want to go too big a caliber for the replacement, because if you put a bigger caliber tree, it'll grow slower.
Yeah. And it's more likely to die.
Yeah.
Which, you know, then you start over.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so what is, what exactly are we approving here? That's what I wanted to know. Because that's what I want to be sure of.
Motion to approve, item GB dash two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one, seven.
Second.
Any questions in motion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? I say that motion passes.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Be much happier raking these leaves than.
Yeah, but unfortunately, you know, lots of teeth, a big one.
All right, moving on again, item number thirteen, GB dash two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one, eight, seven, four, two, South Fifth Street. Settle, please raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Julie Bullock.
Thank you very much.
The proposed work description is an exterior building alteration to infill a porch. The infill of porch below a second floor addition on the south elevation. Remove the second floor balcony that was installed following a nineteen eighty-seven COA. To install new thirty-six inch metal railing or balcony was removed. The new enclosed porch to have four windows with paneling, one door on the south elevation and paneling on the east elevation, windows from the group windows. To match the existing tree, trim detail of the connection of the second story addition and the new proposed infill. Staff analysis at the April business meeting, the commission requested confirmation on the drawings where windows were shaded and panels were, were, were white and expressed concern of removal of brick from the corner of the property. Staff requested confirmation with the proposed lighting fixtures and downlight, all named. Applicant confirmed the windows are shaded and panels are white. Applicant provided that on the first floor, some of the addition is brick and some is framed. Only the brick being, being, only brick being removed is from the new floor to the powder room, which would be a two foot four inch opening. So the corner of brick will remain and be exposed on the interior. Applicant confirmed the lighting, the lighting fixture will be a downlight. Staff reserves the history of the property and found the main brick portion was constructed prior to eighteen ninety-one, including part of the rear brick portion. The second story addition was added prior to the completion of the nineteen fifty sand board maps, when the back portion of the house went from one story to two story. In nineteen eighty-eight, it appears the porch enclosure was altered, a stair was removed and the second floor balcony was added. Staff also provided images from the nineteen eighty-four of there being a three, three season slash screen co-worked enclosure underneath the second story addition. The staff recommendation is that staff recommends the commission offer feedback and continue the application to allow time for the application and the design to better align with the German village guidelines for additions. But if the commission decides to approve the porch enclosure, it does appear to have been altered from its original design. Staff recommends the porch enclosure be set back from the existing post to differentiate it from the existing addition. The basis for the staff recommendation is three one one six thirteen standards for site improvements two, three, four, nine, ten, and eleven. And German village guidelines, porches and stukes, one. German village guidelines, alteration to existing structures additions, one, two, four, and five. And German village guidelines, entryways and porch closures, two, five, and six.
I mean, clearly this has been modified quite a few times and as it stands right now, I'm sure it's not something that you would approve today. We're trying to kind of rectify the aesthetics of it. The, it, so basically what we're proposing to infill aligns with what is above. And so that's, that's why we have a lining now, because we felt like recessing would be a little bit of an odd detail, basically. Trying to bring it back to something that is more German village in character, I guess, you know, as much as we can, given what we have to work with, so.
Questions, comments from the commission?
Yeah, I'd like to know if it's on the commission. They voted for the second story addition.
Michael Rosen was the chair.
No, that tells.
In a couple of years, it'll be considered contributing.
Yeah, I know. Good point.
And I never assumed that balcony got added. I can tell you stories. I have nothing to add.
So the balcony and the second floor addition were done eighty-seven thousand five?
Eighty-seven.
So Michael Rosen is the chair. Yes. By the early, it was modified.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
The second floor addition was present by the early nineteen fifties.
May have been before. Yeah. How far it came. How it was. Then from eighty-eight to today, it's been modified again, but similar.
I mean, the trim on that second floor addition is definitely a more contemporary trim.
Oh, yeah.
They bought, they bought the house in this condition, basically, so they don't really know the history.
It hasn't changed much in twenty years. So are there any, any issues with what being proposed? I would, I would just note, I think that that, the lining, that's to me, in consideration, if you look at the old nineteen eighty-four pictures, it was a aligned closure. It's kind of similar.
So you're saying it should align or?
Yeah, should, yeah. Right with that.
Does anyone have any comments on casement versus double home? Because that's something else we kind of struggled with. I felt it would look more like a panel with the casement windows.
So. If that makes sense to me. Differentiates it from the.
That's what I.
Historic windows.
Exactly. Forgot about the hot tub.
About the light?
Hot tub.
Yeah. Casement going where?
That infill in the lower level is casement windows.
Oh, oh, oh.
With trans.
It's reading as a, as a screened in, but it's going to be casement.
Yes, yes.
Got it, got it. I think a double home, I must bring it up too much. Yeah. Nicely outlined at the top of the order. There's no questions or comments? Motion to approve, GB dash two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one.
Does the commission want a condition with the windows we submitted to HBO staff prior to the issuance of the certificate?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, and it does say from the list on the application.
I have to do the construction details to get.
Okay.
With that clarification.
Second.
Just want to address staff's comment of approving the porch closure. Set back this post, we said that would be flush as a fullness. That explains why. Okay. Just to make sure staff got their answer for their comment.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? I say that motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Very much. I'm going to take a quick five minute break and I've got to take care of something. And we'll be back at five forty-nine.
Not thinking maybe it's. Yeah, probably. That's kind of.
Yeah. It's the last thing.
Close the door.
Yeah, right. You're still pointing to the. Suit opened right on. Remember you killed yourself. We were in the whole fair. It was dark. I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it. The end of the night. Scooties. Or your cats.
Yeah.
Still haven't said, they know where it started. Pursued it.
Under construction, somebody pulled up.
So. It was a rag, but it's light axe, so it's a boy with rags.
It's like we were. Do you? There's a reason there's a lot of. And I can't remember what the guy did. Was something hot? When we could see that.
And then just. All my countrymen turned and put a little litifier. One guy's in the tunnel. Yeah. All right, back on the record. Item fourteen, GB dash two, three, dash, zero, four, dash, zero, one, nine, ten, ten, Jäger. Once you're settled, please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Josh Wood.
Thank you.
Also, I'm not an architect.
You don't have to be.
No, it just says that I am.
Oh. Steph?
The approved work description is for exterior building operation to install new gas lanterns. To remove the existing electrical light fixtures, there's two, and replace with two gas lanterns in exact location. The gas lantern to the Bevelow Williamsburg flush mount. The measurements are twelve and one eighth in high, seven and three quarters inch wide, and four inches in depth. The installation will be the existing hole of the mortar from the electrical wire toward the gas line. The applicant submitted a COA application for new gas light fixtures for the entryways initially proposed of more ornate fixture, the Bevelow Governor Bracket, a lane inspired by historic colonial fixtures. The staff recommended the applicant work with the homeowner select a more compatible fixture, and the applicant selected the current proposed fixture, the Bevelow Williamsburg flush mount. After the April business meeting, the applicant was asked to confirm the finish color and size of the proposed fixture and confirm if brick would need to be removed for the installation. The applicant confirmed the finish would be dark copper finish and the size was twenty-two inches. Staff had initially recorded the fixture sixteen inches on their business meeting at JF. The applicant also clarified that no brick would need to be removed. Staff informed the applicant the size of the fixture would not meet the guidelines at twenty-two inches and recommended the applicant select a smaller fixture. The applicant decided to use the same fixture in the twelve inch size, following German village guidelines for size of light fixtures. Staff recommends approval with any and all clarifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to issues of the certificate. Basis for the staff recommendation is three one one six eleven standards for alteration two, three, and nine. The German village guidelines for exterior considerations, site lighting, street furniture, pools, fountains, and gazebos, one, two, and three.
Anything else ahead? Questions, comments from the commission?
I'm glad it's now about the same size what's there.
Anything else ahead? Questions, comments, or questions?
I'm glad it's not about the same place, what's there?
Concerns or comments, is there a motion? Motion to approve item GB dash two-three dash zero four dash zero one nine. Second. Question of the motion? Like the comment that we're replacing a fixture with a fixture as opposed to putting a new fixture where a fixture has been before? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Aye, seven, motion passes. Thank you very much. We would have had a lot more questions for you if we were an architect. All right, moving on to item fifteen, GB dash two-three dash zero four dash zero two zero, two oh nine East Whittier. If you're set, if you please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the best truth.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name to the record.
James Knox with Sun Bract.
Thank you very much.
The proposed work description is new construction to install a new porch, to install a new front porch measuring eight feet by eighteen feet on the north elevation of the primary structure that was built in nineteen seventy-eight. To have wood steps, one by six treated pine, spreading, cedar railings, five over, five-fourths and six decking, posts to be four by four treated pine with textured smart trim, posts to have one by eight smart trim ramp and one by four smart trim cap, as well as a one by four space trim. The fascia to have a one by eight smart trim. The gutters to be five-inch aluminum case style aluminum downspouts. Sobs to be AC applied with the vents. To install a new front door on the north elevation, location of existing virtual window, the door to install a new, doors to be installed with a new thirty, with a new thirty-six inch header with a new pre-hung door. Staff analysis of the April business meeting, the commission requested the applicant contact Building and Zoning Services to see if any variances are needed for the porch. Staff also requested current photos of the property and clarification on what was meant by smart trim of the application materials. Staff also informed the applicant that textured hardy board trim is not applicable. Applicant notified staff that they were waiting on a response from Building and Zoning Services. They also provided current photos of the property, so that there would be, they would bring a sample of smart trim to the meeting for the commission review, and clarified the drawings had, had mentioned earlier textured hardboard trim and not the hardy board, but that this was incorrect and the trim will be a smart trim. Staff does not typically support the use of smart trim and would recommend wood or. Staff note, while two oh nine East Whittier is relatively new construction compared to other homes in German Village, staff would not support altering the existing openings per German build guidelines on page one seventy-seven. Due to the building's age of staff, the building, to the building's age in forty-five years, staff would consider it a strategy of contributing. Staff recommends the commission offer feedback and continue the application to allow the applicant time to revise their design to better align with the guidelines and code. The basis for the staff recommendation is three-one-one-six, zero-one-seven, letters P, Q, and R, following the definition of what property, and three-one-one-six-eleven standards for alteration, one, two, three, four, five, ten, and eleven, and the German Village Guidelines for Windows, six.
Anything else ahead?
No, sir.
So we see the sample there?
Yes.
Then if there's any questions or comments from the commission? Can you raise with it? Smart. It's a smart trick, right?
Yes. It has a prime surface for applying paint finish.
Basically wood?
Yes. And it's available in several board widths, four inch, six inch, eight inch.
What makes it smart?
Our.
The glue.
Part of the smart side. So, interesting application because it's now, this is a contributing structure, asking to put a door in, basically make a front porch, and make what, what is not currently the front door of a contributing structure. So principal has challenges with that, you know? Seven, still a little bit, I'm sorry. I started talking. Have the problem. And I'm standing really wide. Yeah, yeah. So I think we need to tackle that before we get too far personally.
In the weeds, yeah.
And I don't know that I see a path myself, but I'm interested however.
Well, we have a lot in contributing structures, the replacement of a window by a door.
In a contributing structure?
Yeah, yeah.
With a new porch to make it a whole?
No, we, no. I wasn't going there.
It's really the totality of it.
Yeah, I think you, you need a little part. We have done that, but we, but never on a primary facade that I know of.
Put porches on. Know of a wall, but on the side of the house.
You come with us.
I didn't think if we put a porch on with the facade, put a facade of the house.
I could think of one where you let them take it off.
I know we denied one on the side elevation because the side elevation was the front. Twisted. I just wanted the guy was unhappy.
So it's in forty-five years?
Forty.
Well, this is forty, national standards.
Okay, this is right now?
To help you understand, are you following what we're going through here?
Yes.
Okay. Pickle, find ourselves in.
Where's the front door now?
It's around the side.
It's on the left side. The lock is. Existing lockway.
Yes. They, I believe it's split in a duplex.
Was that an application from seventy-eight, or was that before we got that stuff going?
Yes.
Was there an application back in seventy-eight, or was that before we?
There was an.
It's not included in this. When would it, when would it guide? I mean, another bit of that over the years. Did the application predate the guideline? Yeah. Which is tricky to have a commission without guidelines. Eighty-nine.
So there's actually a door on the east side in the west.
Look at seventy-eight application. What's there today that matches seventy-eight? Has anything changed since seventy-eight?
It matches, it's very similar, it not matches exactly.
No significant changes, it wasn't a door. Principal saw back then. Now looking at this, thought was, looking for inspiration, if, if I were to get into a porch on the side, it feels like the style of house that would be along the east side of City Park. This rhythm of this style, triple openings and whatnot. And most houses of that style have a porch. There are plenty of front porch throughout. I was trying to think, I was traveling around, kind of a little wandering, or is there a house of this style? Doesn't.
Or do you want to argue how contributing is this?
That's, that's my next step.
Just put it this way, it is at the end of fifth, so it's right there.
Yeah, it is.
How curious, is it, is that a slippery slope now? That's, there's a, there's a, there's a.
Yeah, there is.
Sure reason, you know?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, so that we don't have to.
And this was approved as is, whether we like it or not.
Is there any evidence of what was there prior to seventy-eight?
From what I remember, according to the sandboard maps, it was a big gap.
Sure looked more like a German village house, or a porch. Lots of houses with, with side entrances.
Yeah.
And the variety is part of the character.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to, I'm trying to find a way to look at it.
Yeah, right.
You're right.
Probably not a good example, but the house that we had, we had to tear down on third, was replaced with a house with a porch. The porch does change this free skate.
The other thing we've used is, is this elevation so hideous that a porch?
Same, same interest.
But I don't know if that counts, truth.
We've, we've allowed operations like shutters in our house, but it had been greatly altered.
Yeah, it had been greatly altered. And those are gone.
Shutters are gone. It feels like this house wasn't wanting. So I'm trying to get over it, it's the, it's the, is it contributing? Or not, I think it's well. But to a certain degree, the, the work of the commission before us at this stage is now part of the contributing nature of the building, right? And in particular, German Village, such a long history in the United States, being one of the first, they were supposed to be doing this. It's actually historic that this was approved by the historic commission.
Well, and here's the other part, the addition, the porch is, the porch is an addition.
Yeah.
We would never allow an addition on the front.
True. We're having a hard time.
I see that.
See how we can improve it. But your argument of the commission's actions in the past have become part of.
The fabric.
The fabric of the whole thing. We, there's, once they're past the contributing, I'm sorry. True, a lot of what we've seen undone has been in the eighties still, less than. Get close? Getting close.
Somebody needs to tell the people, people with those mistakes, that they need to apply to fix themselves.
Maybe three or later, fix them.
If this was a stoop, would it be a different conversation?
No. Unless there was evidence that their porch was a stoop.
I can't get putting a door.
How about an upgrade patio? Landscap, upgrade patio?
With no door, just patio on the front?
Connects the wall.
Landscaping? But I don't think it accomplishes what they want.
Right.
And sympathy with what they'd like to accomplish, but I don't think we can do it. Very.
Also, the, I did speak with zoning, and they said there would not be a variance necessary for a front porch.
So the.
They could go right up to the property and I'm with the porch open, not enclosed.
It comes down to, to our guidelines, give us the leeway to approve altering the principle of sad of a structure if we consider contributing. I think that's, that's what we're struggling with is.
Correct, yes.
Get past that line of demarcation.
I think we have only if that principal facade has already been greatly altered.
Altered after the period of contention.
With them, sometimes we need, oh, no, just. Renated.
Well, let's be clear, eighty-two is contributing.
Well, back then, you don't only have ten years old.
Yeah, I think it is what, I think, what you're looking at is what was built in seventy-eight.
If Columbus was in line with the national of fifty years, it could be a different conversation. Columbus estate is forty.
Maybe we stuck with the forty. I don't think we can change now. It's not incredible, no way.
Sorry to remind you, staff is of the same opinion? Yeah.
I'm following the vote.
Was it the review internally of JV or others to, to consider? I don't think we got the votes to get you there. I think we're kind of dead in the water up the gate.
So, obviously no chance for a front porch addition.
We, we can go through the voting process, that allows you to have whatever appeal rights you want. Yeah, I would recommend you do that. If we vote and we don't approve, so we'll vote in the affirmative, so we deny it, then applicant, you have the opportunity to go a couple of different paths. You can come back, we can hear it on, on appeal, go to the board zoning appeals. And mediation is also the third option.
I, I think appeal is first step automatically is appeal it here, first, then deny it again.
Staff can give you the, the option to pass afterwards. But if we don't vote and give you the denial, then you've got, you can't go to the next step, essentially. So it would be a vote, it would get denied, but at least you can do something else if you vote and do something else.
Yes.
Like a forward.
There's no room.
Yeah.
There's, the house takes up most of the lot width there.
Same. The only.
Yeah, only thirty-one foot wide lot.
How wide is the building?
Twenty-two, or.
It looks pretty tight.
Yeah.
Six and a half feet, I was thinking.
I want to say it's twenty-two is the width of the house.
But it's not, it's seven. Their plans got six and a half, most of it, I'm thirteen.
Based upon the porch brought in from the edges, it doesn't go completely to the edge of the house.
My mind was going, if you don't have proper amount of clearance on the side properties to have the egress per city, that could be a hardship route you could take of you need to have a legal entrance, and there's not enough room on the side of the house, principal size of the own location. That could be an avenue, I'm not saying it would work, but.
There are wood steps to a platform to a door on both sides.
Yeah, so that's, trying to take you down the path of my mind, but my mind wants.
Yes.
All right, so.
Appreciate the input.
I'll make the motion then, motion to approve GB dash two-three dash zero four dash zero two zero. Second. Any questions to motion? All those in favor? All those against? Aye. Motion denied. As far as the backup for that, go on with the staff recommendation basis, three-one-one-six-point-zero-one-seven, letters P, Q, and R, three-one-one-six-point-one-one, items one, two, three, four, five, ten, eleven. And then German Village Guidelines under windows, item six. That's all we got. If you want to give us that after, they can direct you to next steps.
Okay. That's hopefully followable with tomorrow, or?
The minutes take about three to five business days.
Okay. Follow up after that, okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, moving ahead to item sixteen, GB dash two-three dash zero four dash zero two one, one-two-nine Jackson Street. Once you're settled, please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the best truth.
I do.
Please state your name to the record.
Haila Mahon.
The proposed work description, this is for exterior building alteration for garage addition, to add approximately four feet to the overall depth of the existing garage in the properties that the people can fit with the garage. The extended portion of the garage will be finished to match the existing, and a new membrane roof will be installed. Existing concrete drive going apron will be replaced with a new concrete and extended. The garage door, side door and window will be replaced. It'll be a wood panel garage door, ten feet by eight feet, to be larger than the previous garage door opening. The man door to be a new wood four-panel transom. White stucco to match existing. Install a new wood fixed window. A new gooseneck light, the architectural bronze gooseneck. A new gooseneck light, the architectural bronze gooseneck outdoor wall stones will be added above the garage door. A new fence will be added to the south property line to match existing. And to install a new half-round aluminum gutter on the east elevation to be painted to match. Replace existing band board on west and north elevation with a new one by ten feet into match. Uh, staff analysis at the equal business meeting, the commission requested a photo of the existing garage door. And recommended that because of the date of the garage, the design may need to be considered. So the addition does not match the historic section in materials or appearance. The commission also requests information on how the garage extension would interact with the fence. Staff request the paint color and staff provide sandboard maps and road construction data for the garage. The applicant provided a photo of the door. The applicant stated that due to the size of the additions, like the material of the addition being different from the historic garage was appropriate. The applicant provided that the extended garage will not touch the existing fence, will be right up to it. The paint color will be Sherwin-Williams SW seven-five-six-six to West Island White. Staff found that the garage was most likely constructed prior to nineteen fifty-one. As there isn't a cinder block garage with a similar footprint that appears in the nineteen fifty-one sandboard. Uh, staff recommendation, staff recommends approval with any all certifications to be submitted to HPO staff for human approval. Prior to the additions of certificate with the following conditions. Um, the recommended conditions are that the applicant to amend the designs to differentiate the addition from the historic section of the garage. And to maintain the existing door garage door opening. And new drawings to be submitted to HPO staff for review and approval prior to the issuance of a certificate. The basis for the staff recommendation is three-one-one-six-eleven, standards for alteration, one-three-four, ten. And the German Village guidelines, alterations to existing structures for additions, one, two, three, four, and five.
Anything else to add?
So, um, I believe that the way the addition works because of that wedge shape. If we were to keep the existing garage door, does that mean, I'm, I'm not sure. It would work still, we can study it. Um, I think the shift occurred so that you could pull a car in there still.
Looking at the, looking at the sandboard. From fifty-one, looks like that's extended property line, the whole thing. I'm reading that correctly. Whereas now it's kind of cut short. Looking at the materials. At that rough block on the. North facade, which is on the interior yard side. Don't have rough down the street side. Inside, it looks like there's a some rough block facing in versus out, definitely some alteration over time. Um, one, one of my questions is. The application shows the door height getting taller.
Yes.
Looking at the photos. Looks like the roof is sloping from the street side, the west side, down to the east.
Right.
And that garage door looks like it's right up against the joists. Is there going to be a head height to grow that garage door taller?
Excellent question, um. I'm not sure, we will have to study that. There, there might be more, there might be more room than the way the picture is taken. We will have to measure that, but yes, that is, it is sloping that way.
Like I started to try to grow that garage opening taller, get the roll up door to, to get enough clearance, you're going to be hitting right into those joists and. Taking off roofs of the garage just to make a tall garage door fit, so.
Right.
Think that just be reviewed a little bit. It did look like from your initial application to this application. Um, the alignment with property line got fixed and everything, it looked like it was kind of skewed before.
I think we.
That takes care of my concern about that.
You wanted to keep the extension the same stucco? Would you be able to inset it a little bit?
Sure, actually, I, I was thinking we might actually need a control joint or something since that's, you know. Subtle, so.
Down the side street. The addition comes. You know, parallels the garage or perpendicular to the garage door rather than on the angle. Completely an addition.
Well, um, is it eight-inch block that's there right now, like six-inch block maybe and then get it?
Sure.
So the old corner is possible.
I agree, something to differentiate it, show it to me.
Okay.
Um, on the bottom picture center, zoom in at the very base of that wall. Is there a board material on the exterior face of this, or is this just simply a barge coating over block? Cause it looks like.
Peeling away?
Yeah, the street side at the corner, it looks like it's kind of peeling away, almost looks like a board product kind of kicking out.
We, we're talking about that.
Yeah, right down there. And it might just be how the picture looks in pixelation, but almost looks like there's a, there's a board product kind of curling out of the wall. So I'm wondering what. What's underneath? Assuming it's just.
That's what we assume as well, I don't think it's fur out or anything. Um, it might just be deteriorating a little bit, or just the photos weird or something.
It might be. Sure, whatever we're putting back in, we understand what the condition is of materials and how they're going to interact with anything else.
Ned, how do you feel about removing the existing wall?
The garage door wall?
Yeah.
Um, I think it has to to make it work, but definitely the addition. Just needs to be enough to give depth to the garage, traditionally, that's what people did.
Yeah.
The, the cars got bigger, the garages were built small, they either pushed out the other side. Which can't do here. Well, I don't know why you can't. Um, yeah, no, yeah, I don't know why they can't go out the other way. Um, it can be just enough for the bonnet of the car to get underneath. It's what they used to do, um, or come out the front just parallel with, parallel and perpendicular to the, that back wall. Enough to give you the extra depth, how much things do you need, what are you sure?
Only three feet.
Three feet, yeah.
Yeah.
We talked about this on the house on Yeager. He wanted to rebuild that garage, we gave him the option of going out with the other side.
On the north side.
Yeah.
But my thought is that north side has that extra block.
And you can see it.
And if the fifty-one sandboard is right and the garage went all the way to the south end of the property. That means that this has been cut back, which means that south facade of the garage is not.
I don't think the sand, sorry. I really don't.
I, I do agree though Anthony, the north side of the garage is visually more interesting.
I'm trying to remember, cause I remember the, the charging of this at one time was bad, really bad. Maybe I'm thinking of the house.
Oh. Sandboard maps. D. Typically dwell, correct?
Yes.
Garage in fifty-one sandboard map has a D and a C being.
Are you seeing, does the fifty work?
Yeah. That one H.
Yeah.
I guess we're doing the H stands for?
Do not.
It may not have been the garage originally, may have stood in an ancillary, ancillary structure of some kind of, may not be the same though.
Yeah.
It's a little, it's porch.
It's, it's, well, it's gotta be, I mean, that block is, is as early as nineteen hundred.
But if you look at the inside. You've got what looks like an infill door.
Patch.
With the rumble block facing.
Yeah, I know, and it's a patch, I'm not arguing with it, it's, it's, I, I don't know.
I'm wondering if, if the, the street side used to be, was there a garage door up in there and it wasn't a, 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 a garage? Was it just another structure?
I'm wondering whether there is this one-story portion, square portion with the truncated. If, if, that's the, that's the building we're left with.
That's, that's, no, that's the house.
Oh, we're talking about this building?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
And so it almost looks, Anthony's proposing to maybe cut that chunk off.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, if, if, if this has been altered from fifty-one, there are any photos with it being right next to the, the, uh. Refect or it might be some store photos. Showing some stuff in here. Was it dwelling originally, a secondary dwelling or something, or a shop? That south facade may not be original, that may be the least original thing on this building, in which case I wouldn't be okay moving it south.
I'd rather see him go north.
I, I, I agree with Anthony that I think that that north elevation is more interesting.
It's inside.
Yeah, he can see it.
Yeah, okay, but, but say you go about three feet, six feet high, you get the front end of the car up. You're not gonna see that from the street.
H on the sandboard map being sideways. Basically to first floor.
So that was some kind of utility boat, they were.
Yeah.
Wasn't it up?
I mean, you go, I, you go south, it's gotta look like something totally different, there's something interesting. The whole house, the way it's situated on the street is, it's, it's very unique.
I'm mistaken myself on that. It's the original footprint, original north wall.
No, I'm not, I, I think it is too, I think what you're looking at is original, I think it's probably hundred, more than a few years old.
So I would say the north end being the original boundary of the original wall, take more precedence over the south, if it's been cut back.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're both, no, I'm disagreeing. I don't think it was cut back. Not buying something. I mean, just look at, look at how, the first one, look at how the house is configured in the second one. They, they need to get this.
They wouldn't have made it that big if it was this small. They would have made it more of this size instead of there.
I don't know. I'm looking at the house, I mean, look at the, the houses, house difference from the first one to the second one. That's, that's what I'm telling you, the accuracy is not, sandboards give you a gesture, a notion, but they're, they're not accurate.
But they wouldn't be so, so far different than maybe this little tiny garage is big as the whole house. Scale wise, you can still get some scale, there's no way they would have taken this small structure and drawn it the entire size and leave it, the primary structure.
You mean this one here?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I'm not, I don't think that's it.
That's fifty-one, that's, that's the.
I don't think that's it.
So you think that fifty-one was taken down and something else put up?
No, I don't, I don't, just don't think in fifty-one they registered.
That's the actual fifty-one screen name of the building?
This is the nineteen sixty-one update. Just trying to see real quick if maybe I had any insight.
So Anthony, you're, you're supposing that they chopped that blue thing out, basically.
Looked like in half and if there was a.
So maybe the garage door was on the side, the difference was on the side.
Well, I guess it's, it looks like there, that infill was a man door. This is probably a shop of some sort. That to send this out then to the property, that, that's where I think. The, the CD stands for?
Hey, concrete block.
But Anthony, why couldn't this have been a door?
I'm thinking that might be.
But not a man door.
The maintenance overhead door.
Yeah, yep.
They always did things out.
Open engines.
So I'm in favor of moving south to northwest.
I'm okay moving south.
Yeah.
That's it. I do feel Trista.
I'd rather take a question. Which have the graphics.
This is south, yeah. Yeah, so the garage door is back.
On the south side.
How about you Jeff, which, which are you, you have already brought in?
Yeah, so. I don't think it matters a whole bunch. Probably true. Really, I mean. I. Sandboard seemed, seemed unreliable.
Yeah.
To a certain extent. It's just not that much can see now, so.
So I think generally we're, as the commission, probably okay moving south.
We get three, four moving south, one definitely no, one.
I didn't say definitely.
Well, you've got three of the five here. So I, I think.
But should it, if you're gonna go that way, should it look like if you, it's just an extension that has nothing, doesn't represent new construction?
Right, but then Trista was, was proposing maybe a little inset. Tier change, material change, something to make it look different.
I, I would say, I would say height too, I don't think it, I think that effort of a parapet needs to stay.
To stay.
Yeah, so it's, the new structure should be lower than.
Yeah.
I agree. We'd like to see the, the new structures be submitted better.
Yeah, that makes me.
Subservive.
Subservive, thank you. And if, if the garage door height went any increase due to the ceiling joists, then it kind of makes, then the need for it to be taller, a move point for it.
Even if we, I guess, that tile that's at the top of that parapet, if that was salvaged and put on the new.
No, we'd like.
It stays.
Yeah. They've got something like budding above it, yeah. It could be a little shed for itself, yeah.
And I'm okay with living in a stucco if it's in, does it go massive change?
Yep.
I, I'd be okay with that.
I like the addition too, but I'm okay with it being so. Yeah, but I think you gotta be able to read the original mass. So I think to get you there, we need to see another design. Um. Which I would think continuance, be, kind of take these comments and come back. Any other comments, sorry.
Yeah, and maybe you'll find something out about whether that stucco is actually on the block or is it on some piece of plywood that's applied to the block? And how high can any garage door actually be?
It looks like a stucco bead, to be honest with you.
It's like what?
Stucco bead that's letting go at the bottom. Taken with plaster worth it.
And what's the preference? What do we want to see? Isn't that if it's attached to the plywood, that's not terrible? Is there a situation where it would all need to be replaced? Is that where you're getting at?
I don't think so, I think repair.
Okay.
It's fine.
Okay, yeah. I don't think we're asking for that. West wall be changed.
I would ask for the next application, um, photo of that east. If you can get one from the east, that looks like from the, uh. From the elevation, looks like you can see the roof, like if the parapet kind of runs this way, the roof below it. That gutter over there, uh, like there's no parapet on that side. Yeah, you're showing a half-round gutter, if there's no overhang, half-round would be appropriate, I think a K-style is on there currently in the picture. So the right gutter for that application would be important.
Okay.
So. I think it's the wall.
Oh yes.
Um, anything else?
Asking for the right profit.
I'm feeling weird, man.
Yeah.
Alright.
What a motion.
Unless applicant has, you wanna? Motion to continue item GD dash two-three dash zero four dash zero two one.
Second.
Any questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, I say motion passes. You pick your side.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is. Alright, I'm moving forward to item seventeen, GB dash two-three dash zero four dash zero two-two by forty, South Sixth Street. First street is the same. You've got both, raise your right hands. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Your name's Sean Files, begin.
Chelsea Hay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the proposed work description, um, for landscaping. Uh, to retain all perennial trees, shrubs and grass from property, retain all perennial flowers. Retain landscaping as not identified on the plan. To install low, less than three-foot Ohio native forests and the grayly foliage will terminate the paving. Install two to three mints of a height less than ten feet, visibly blocking Ohio native evergreen shrubs, arbor by, arbor by day. Uh, convert the gravel filler at the west edge of parking pad to a sloped landscaping bed, there will be no hardscape or structure. Repair the two iron post lunge working order. There's also hardscape to install a small hot tub for three to four person approximately seven by seven feet. As near to the back of the house on the north side of pharmacy, of privacy fence code will allow. To install a two-hundred-and-twenty volt electric line to provide adequate power to the hot tub and the electric vehicle charger. To install a discreet electric vehicle charger and lock cabinet roughly no larger than a fence-mounted garden hose reel. Next to the existing concrete parking pad, the concrete parking pad was approved to twenty fourteen. To install a wooden privacy gate, fence height, uh. Across the brick walkway connecting the two repair sections of the privacy fence in the middle of the yard. Fence and gate to match the existing. Install below eye level approximately fortified peak patio string lighting to the house and fencing surrounding only the private back patio. Install a black metal arbor of the brick walkway on the east alleyway side. Install a black metal arbor of the brick walkway on the east alleyway side of the privacy gate. Dimensions are eighty-three point eight five inches high, fifty-one five inches wide, and twenty-two point eight three inches in depth. The exterior building alteration to remove the security bars from the windows, mainly change the structure. Staff analysis, at the April business meeting, the commission discussed the materials packet. The commission sought clarification on the photo on the last page showing an iron fence and non-wooden privacy fence as indicated on the site plan. And staff, uh, we requested the applicant have recently the labor specification information for the charger cabinet as link did not work. The applicant resubmitted the link and clarified that no changes are proposed around iron fence from the last page. The fence that needs repair is visible in the photo for figure five. The fence is fully by seven to the property. Only the south coast remains of the south portion while the north portion is damaged and. Staff added all the specification information from the materials packet. The staff recommendation, as staff recommends approval, letting all clarifications based on the HBO staff review and approval prior to the issue of certificate. This is based per staff recommendation is three one one six one three standards for site improvements A. And German village guidelines, site by eight street corners, pools, fountains, and gazebos, one, two, three, five, and six.
Anything else to add?
Uh, no, thank you.
Questions, comments from the commission? I just wanted to, uh, the key with the pictures on the little.
I did the best I could.
He's up.
It's, it's super helpful.
I did this all on PowerPoint too, so I don't have. I don't have those, uh, professional skills.
And he's a professional.
So what you're changing, no changes as regarding fencing or pavement in the front yard?
No, no, just.
North side yard. It's in the back that you're taking a lot of the brick out to replace with.
Oh, we're not taking any brick out.
Oh, I'm looking at this one picture.
We haven't, we've just purchased the property. There are some piles of bricks. We have not removed those. Those, those were like that.
And so, um, figure four?
Yep.
All that brick in the back?
Yeah, that's, we have not done that.
But is it all staying?
No, that, that is just a pile of brick. So I don't, we will move that pile of brick, but I don't know.
But all the pavers that are.
I'm, I'm talking about the pavement.
Yeah, all the pavers will stay and that pile that's by the house will go into the basement if we need to like repair anything, but all the brick itself that's laid will stay as paper.
Yeah, we haven't taken anything up or made any changes.
So the, the square, then we see that's key number five on figure four, I think it's just for the straight lines then.
Correct, correct.
Think that maybe you thought they were changing something with the layout based on that.
Well, I'm going in this pathway that goes, they've drawn through the middle of the backyard and I assume that that was gonna stay brick and everything. North and south is gonna become landscaped stuff.
No, we're, we're leaving, I, we're leaving all of the current brick that's in place. There are a few places where we're gonna repair it and just bring it up. Uh, but otherwise we're not making any changes to it.
Uh, what's happening under the hot tub? It's gonna be on the concrete platforms, I think, or is it sitting on the brick?
Uh, we're gonna put it on the brick. We could also put it on, they do make, uh, material that goes on top, you could put on top of the patio that you put the hot tub on. I don't know that that's necessary.
Wasn't sure how level the brick was, but.
I, my plan is to re-level the patio as it is. There's, there's already some pretty severe divots in there that are gonna collect water. But we're just gonna put it up and refill the base, redo the sand, put exactly what took out back in.
The thing, what we're struggling with is, is the scale.
Yeah, because I'm assuming that this is brick.
Yeah.
And this is not.
Look at figure five. There's, you'll see a fence.
Yep.
Kind of part way up there. You look at the plan, that's the, that's that.
Red line?
Bold line with most to eleven.
Yep, okay.
So the, especially like before, that was kind of taken from where the fence is.
So the, the foreground.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, things. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, that fence, I'm standing at that fence line now.
The focal depth of the picture to make it look a little bit longer compared to the scale of the plan.
Gotcha, okay, good. I have no issues.
The one thing I saw, there, there's a gate being added.
Yeah, so I'm not sure. Only one section of that privacy fence, uh, remains. There's some posts, uh, but the, the bulk of the fence is gone. So I, I'm not sure if that fence that separated the property had a gate crossing the walkway. We would like there to be a gate.
In that gap.
I, in that gap between the two sections of privacy fence. That would be a, we're proposing a wooden gate that would match to the design of the fence.
And then for one piece of clarification on figure six. So the plan on the south side, so it's a fifty property fence, the whole length, but there's, there's iron fences staying going from the east property line past the concrete pad.
Yeah.
To some portion somewhere stops.
Yeah, I'm not even sure if that fence is technically on our property or on the neighbor's property. It gets a little squarely there, so we're not, we're not amending.
Okay. I, I just noticed that the, the fence doesn't actually extend as far as the plan shows, so I want to make sure. Looking at it.
PowerPoint, forgive me.
Oh, yeah, all good.
Oh, it's good.
Better than most. Yeah, I think that, I mean, I don't have to, but the fence that is there, we're gonna put the gate, is a church dog year fence. Looks like it's being in, which it's existing, right? It can't be. Have I read that right? There's a.
It looks like big piglets to me.
Piglets, well.
Some of their points.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's not the type of.
They do like points.
Yeah, the pointed, yeah.
Both of the neighboring fences are, are very similar and we would like to match to what the neighboring houses have, so it looks like one continuous.
Yeah, so you replace that fence altogether.
Altogether.
Should match those other fences.
Yeah.
That'd be great. So just to point picking versus dog year. Did some historical research, going back to older catalogs, what they call things, hard damage is just changing time.
Yeah, so.
I just, it's a conversation.
Point that's like a dog's gear.
Yeah, that tends to be what a lot of the old ones call, point dog gears.
You need to find time to do this.
Get bored and go down YouTube rataballs.
Oh, I can see you guys, we, you can throw like that.
Not part of this application, but we gotta have a conversation something. It'd be helpful. Any, any other questions, comments, concerns? There are none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve GV dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, two, two.
Second.
Your choice. Uh, any questions on the motion? Oppose in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stand up motion passes.
I know this, you guys were here since the beginning.
Next.
Oh my gosh. I don't know.
It's been great to watch.
We're gonna go eat, so.
All right, I'm moving on to item number eighteen GV dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, two, three, five, four, nine, south sixth street. Once you're settled, please raise your right. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Anson Barrett, property owner.
Thank you very much.
The proposed work description is for landscaping to remove the silver, silver maple tree, ground stump and replace the tree with the one, two inch London plane tree. To remove the landscape bricks for tree removal and replace the bricks once the tree, once the new tree has been installed. Staff analysis, at the April business meeting, the commission insisted a photo of the entire tree and staff insisted the photos of the base of the tree. The applicant has provided updated photos. A staff recommendation, as staff recommends approval, letting all clarifications be submitted to HBO staff review and approval prior to patients of certificate with the following conditions. The condition being as the applicant has already proposed to be plant, a tree to be planted at the same location in one year. Uh, the basis for staff recommendation is three one one six one three, four minutes per site improvement A.
Anything else to add?
No.
Questions, comments from the commission?
Like to go back forty or fifty years and have a talk with whoever planned with all these silver mammals. No kidding.
I had like four in my yard and one by one, they came down naturally.
Yeah.
And with, without having Christian McCoy be here, Christian McCoy here, uh, the London plane trees go to a height of seventy-five to a hundred feet with a spread of eighty feet of curries. This is a shade tree.
An item GV twenty-three oh four oh twenty-three, five forty-nine, south sixth street, I move to approve this as a second.
Any questions on the motion? Oppose in favor?
Aye.
Against? I say motion passes.
Thank you.
Very much. Uh, item nineteen was withdrawn. Item twenty GV dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, two, five, six, eight, four, south third street.
Excuse me.
Right, for the record show. I should fully confused. Uh, can you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear.
And what's your name?
Matthew Teisman, MKC Architects.
Thank you very much.
Um, the proposed work description is for new construction and exterior building alteration for design changes. On the south elevation, to replace existing glass block info with two light windows for safety concerns. Windows through the same size outfitting as what is existing. On the east elevation, there's a change of design from a five bay configuration to a three bay configuration in wall integrity. On the north elevation, there's, uh, to convert the design from three bay windows. To, uh, fill in the middle window with masonry. On the north elevation, to reduce the size of the windows next to the arched opening due, due partly to structural reasons. The staff analysis, the applicant submitted revised drawings to be stamped as part of the previously approved divisions and for GV twenty-two dash, what, twelve, dash zero, two, nine. Approved by the commission in December of twenty twenty-two. Before standing, the document staff reviewed the elevation drawings and noticed the four major changes in design that had not been reviewed by the commission. Staff notified the applicant they would need to return to the commission and applicant submitted a new application for new changes. At the April business meeting, the commission asked the applicant to revise their package to show the previously approved design next to the new proposed design. Applicant has amended their application materials packet. Uh, staff recommendation is that staff recommends to continue the application to allow the applicant to revise their design with fewer changes to the existing and proposed window openings. And the base staff recommendation is three one one six eleven, standards for alteration, one, two, three, four, five, and nine, and eleven. And German build guidelines for windows, one, two, three, and six.
Anything else to add?
Well, first, uh, I want to apologize. Uh, we weren't trying to, but pull a quick one or anything like that. I thought this had been submitted. The architect who was on this project, Bill Cody, has left my firm and works for a different firm now, so there was a little bit of a miscommunication during transition, so I apologize to the commission for that. Um, secondly, you know, as you know, dealing with, uh, this project, we had a very limited, uh, site constraints. Uh, we tried to do everything we could to utilize as much of the existing space within the building as we could, which is why you're seeing, uh, the glass block be replaced with other windows. And, uh, as you also know with existing buildings, uh, structural integrity is difficult. And as we've gone throughout this process, we've needed more substantial masonry walls to help with the structural integrity, which is why you see the reduction of the windows. That's it.
In this elevation here, is this the only existing building that you're changing? But all the rest is new construction?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, or demo of the existing building to allow for the new construction. But yes, the only, this is the only part of the existing building that would be remaining that has any change to it.
So you edit, glass block is being replaced by plate openings.
Correct.
All right.
And that's, uh, occupied space behind the principal's office.
Okay. I, I have no issues with the changes they're making to the new construction. I have no issues with the fact that they're taking the glass block out and putting in. Plate opening.
I just, I have a question on the east wall, the, the rhythm, maybe compressed center, but it's on the rear of the building.
It's, it's not that odd. It's not that odd, certainly, to be honest.
You're the architects.
I, I, I would, either one would be important. That's why they're not, I'm not, it's Trista, the other architect's here and the whole area.
Structural engineer says this must be done, so.
And that's what I'm thinking too, I know, and I, I don't mirror that.
There's no concerns or issues?
Contractors can save the cost, gonna cost more and that's okay.
Always gonna cost more.
Yeah, yeah, I know, never mind.
Any, uh, questions or comments on the application?
An item GV twenty-three oh four oh two, five, six, eighty-four, south third street, I move to approve this submitted.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? Oppose in favor?
Aye.
Against? I say motion passes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Nicole, thanks for your help today.
Dan.
Uh, item twenty-one has been withdrawn. I'm moving on to, uh, accepted application. Item twenty-two GV dash two, three, dash zero, four, dash zero, two, seven, which, uh, consists of thirty and forty Columbus streets and seven, six, two Pearl Street. Raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the truth.
I do.
And please state your name for the record.
Kyle Green.
This is for lot combination and exterior building alteration. The lot combination is to combine three adjacent parcels, thirty and forty Columbus and seven, six, two Pearl Street, in a zone R two F residential district. Proposed uses three residential units. The exterior building alteration is, uh, on thirty Columbus to add a new shed dormer on the newer fence outside. Measurements to be eight feet by eight feet one inch. Dormers to have windows from the approved windows list. Forty Columbus is to replace the original industrial metal windows where there are current, currently bricked in openings. New windows to match existing. And to install a new egress window opening on the west elevation of the existing brick structure. On seven, six, two Pearl Street, to install new windows on each side of the existing door on the south facade. To install a new stair access to the rooftop, to the new rooftop deck. At the April business meeting, the commission asked for clarification if there's proposed change in use and what variants have been needed for that change. They requested information on the variants as needed for the rooftop access and requested Allen send us to the heights of the adjacent properties. The commission requested that staff provide sandworm maps and or the enforcement date of the construction for all three buildings. Staff has provided sandworm maps from nineteen ninety-one, nineteen twenty-one, and nineteen fifty-one. And there, the nineteen twenty-one, nineteen fifty-one sandworm map show buildings at all three properties. It just shows, there, there are buildings there. Staff recommendation, staff recommends that the commission should offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future TDC meeting. The basis for the staff recommendation noted that no action is required is three one one six eleven, standards for alteration, one, two, three, four, five, nine, and ten. And three one one six, uh, thirteen, standards for site improvements A.
Anything else to add?
Uh, I'll pass out, uh, the list of the variances. Um, yeah, I, so I would like to just probably, um, explain why we want to combine the lots. Uh, and, and then we can sort of talk about the details after. Uh, so currently three buildings on, on three parcels. Uh, most of the setbacks are minimal, one foot. Uh, some of the windows have been bricked in and the problem with that is we can't, we can't reopen them because they're so close to the property line, since they've already been covered. Um, also the buildings, uh, over past renovations and additions are connected. So seven, sixty-two Pearl and forty Columbus, you can walk right through. It's one office space, even though they're on two separate parcels. Thirty Columbus is physically attached to forty Columbus. You can't walk through the interior space, but the roof line comes across and, and they're actually, you know, connected. Um, and that's again across a, a parcel line. Currently, the buildings are vacant, previously used as offices, office space. Um, originally it zoned R two F, and so they will be three residential, um, units again. Um, but with that, uh, we'd like to open up some of the existing windows. So by combining the lots, we get rid of those interior, uh, lot lines that are causing us issues on, um, those big giant, you know, the big three windows. Um, on forty Columbus, um, are really great and we'd love to open those back up. They're bricked in on the inside. Um, you can sort of see some of the steel and glass that were, that were there before, uh, before the outside. We'd like to replace those, a couple of spots, um, you know, being a residential, uh, uh, unit, we would need some, um, egress windows for the bedrooms. And so we would propose a couple of new windows at, um, what we think is inconspicuous areas. Um, and, uh, then there's a, we can talk about the dormers and the roof deck and all that. But I just wanted to sort of explain, um, why we would want to combine these lots.
Questions, comments from the commission? Um, regards to those windows that have been bricked in, those are old steel pavement windows. I, I think we're gonna want to see really good particular details of the windows they're going in.
Right.
Uh, I mean, those are cool windows. They don't often get replaced very well. Uh, sometimes people just put like a storefront in with.
Yeah.
A twin sided grid or some, we want something that's good. Not replicate necessarily, but something that speaks good. Two questions on that. One, replace versus restore. Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to have an assessment, um, to whether or not they could be restored. You got to figure out how to handle their casement, so a, a store window and a casement is a pretty weird thing.
Yeah, that will.
But.
I love the same save, yeah.
Being an original window, I mean, part of the fabric, what absolutely we do, there's a possibility to save that and become a, a significant architectural feature. And I think it's a unique and special detail that's been part of, of the, the district that's not often represented anywhere. Uh, and item two, if they had to. Uh, and item two, if they had to be replaced, can be saved. Going back to when we went around. Staff might have this question, um, when we did the approved windows lists. There was a storefront, I believe, or a, of this kind of style that was used of properties back at that time, but staff is impressed with this kind of condition.
I think it's not poorly bad, hold on.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if those got put on the group list or if those didn't. Maybe some history about this technical window. They improve some of their. Yeah. I just remember it got popping up and we're like, whoops, it does. We didn't know.
Versus a, like a actual steel window.
Yeah.
Have you ever loved restoring this stuff? It's tough.
Not yet.
Yeah. I would say too, even in the operating, you've got, I think you've got two vents shown on file, feels like it's actually one large vent.
Yeah, portion of that opens.
Yeah. They're cool. And well, those are a lot of
Same blasted.
I think the lot connecting.
It's really the only way we could come up with doing, you know, bringing the windows back and and even some of the, on the other property lines, we're not going to bring back, we're not going to be able to because it's adjacent properties that we can't, you know, worry about, but they've, you know, these big openings on the um, that'd be the east side of that same building and they've reduced them to little transoms. And we can't open them up because it's like six inches from the property's length. Yeah, but it's kind of a shame.
The two large dormers is strictly to get a master bedroom.
It's an attic space now, um, I did do a couple of quick sections, um. It's really weird, I mean, it's really weird, it's like five foot high, like a landing. Yeah, I, I just quickly cut, they're not super well, um, formatted, but you go up to a lane, the stair is there already and you go up to the landing and it's like, you're basically crawling up the last bit of stairs and then the, the roof is about, I think I put a seven ten to the peak, so the dormers are strictly to meet an attic conversion, um, fifty percent square footage at, at seven feet and, um, tried to minimize that as much as possible. I know the shed dormer is not, um.
It's because of the narrowness.
Yes. Yeah, and so the, the, um, dormer on that you see on this top elevation, that's facing the interior of the site, that's the one where it allows for head height up. The other dormer which face, uh, Columbus, uh, allows for, there's a, there's a, a brick chimney you see in there that cuts through the space and it just allows for space around the chimney and to get that fifty percent head, uh, seven feet to make it, uh, livable space for building code, attic conversion.
Question on the, of the, uh, forty Columbus um, floor plan, which would be page fifteen of the application. Actually, stay right there. So you have three steel windows, you're proposing a new window to be cut out. Egress because it's bedroom. Looking at the plan on page fifteen. Does the bedroom have to be there? Is, is the architecture driving? Is the floor plan driving this window opening or is this the only way it could be?
That would be the only egress win, well, we have, there's another egress window at the, at the other bedroom that falls at the end of that. I'm gonna call it like the little alley, the pathway between the buildings and those will be the only egress windows in the entire, um, in the entire unit, uh, we're not messing with the front because it's beautiful and, you know, big storefront windows. The entire wall on the bottom of the page is the one that's six inches from the property line. There's a few tran, those, those windows that are shown on there, that, those are the ones I talked about where they, they took a big window and moved them up to a transom. Um, so those are really the only two locations that we've identified to even put an egress with, so. Um, and, and between those egress windows is where thirty Columbus juts into it.
Gotcha.
Um, it was tricky, I'll say that.
Yeah, didn't have any elevations or, or photos of, of that, uh, east facade back here, so.
Okay. Yeah.
There is something about the Pearl Street elevation with that new egress, but I just the rhythm, it breaks up that rhythm of the beautiful windows.
Yeah, and I think we can, yeah.
I, I don't know what the solution is, but it's just, uh, speaking to it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, I mean, it it could be higher if, if you thought it might be better to align the head heights, um, it can't, well, the, the sill can't be higher, but the window could be taller.
Is this, there's a requirement lower?
Maybe a half with the same height as the other windows.
Almost like it like just grass, being like just, that's a good idea, yeah.
I'll say that.
Yeah. Feels more intentional. The, the material on the new rooftop access, or is that is it just a stair going to existing doghouse? That doghouse isn't there.
No, no, that's, the doghouse is new, um. I don't, I don't call out a material, um, we would probably, there's nothing really to be matched, there's, um, we could probably just do a, a horizontal horse. Yeah, but if, if the dormers are, get, get, get approved, yeah, we'd love to match the dormers. Um.
Which is like a lap site.
Yeah, we could do that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes.
Yeah. Figure, know a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Something that's come up before, um, when we get to these second floor patios, rooftop patios, above what you will, um, is what does it do for neighbors' privacies? Um, it's a lot of not to see it on the alley side or look in the alley or whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
Question is, right now this is kind of shifting back. Just doing a little bit of drive-by, it looked like it was all backyards, all kind of right in there.
Pretty much, yeah.
So that might be a concern. Neighbors may have an issue with it when they come, um. In this situation, your, your street side is the, the west side. Would it make sense to boot patio to the west side, so you're facing the public way as opposed to private side?
Um, the, the only thought I had with that with keeping it towards the back is the adjacent house is right next door with a couple of windows, you see that gable at the front, I sort of didn't want to have a patio outside that window, but I understand, uh, what you're, what you're getting at, uh.
It became an, an issue, there's a property, the old auto barn kind of just down the street from Lindy's, it was a problem, Lindy's itself was, was an issue, um. Couple of the properties that have done something, this, this come up.
Mm-hmm.
And to very degrees of concern for the neighbors. And it might just be reaching out to the neighbors.
Yeah.
And getting their feedback, and if they come in support of it, that kind of mitigates the concern here.
Okay.
Are you gonna need a guardrail?
Of course, go ahead.
Yeah, we didn't show one, that was my next point, um, we will, we will need a guardrail, I, there's not much of a parapet on the existing and I don't think we we're not gonna propose to extend anything, any wall up, so it would probably be a guardrail that is inset from the exterior wall so that it sort of has, it softens that and you don't see it as much. Um, and, um, I, I don't have a material, but.
I mean, to, to mitigate the issue, you could put a higher guard on the north and the east, or, yeah, east side, maybe even tall, almost like a fence instead of a guardrail, like a private fence. That basically blocks the view, so you can't look down. Just, again, a thought.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Gives them privacy out there too. Gotta be careful about the height, I like the setback, I like the, the doghouse is not taller.
And I don't think, so I'm thinking of on page sixteen, six point one one. Looking at that, uh, Pearl Street elevation. I'm standing on, on the other side of Pearl Street, I'm looking at this property, is that doghouse just gonna be this little there, it's sticking up?
Well, I don't think you'll see it as much as shown on this flat elevation for sure.
Right.
And you know, you're gonna see it, uh, sort of at an oblique angle, right? So you'll see some side of it and it'll just be the front. Um, and, but I can certainly show a, uh, three D image of that next time if that helps.
That's kind of what I'm thinking about, the, the fence I did too, but it gives some mass up there and it doesn't seem like it's this thing sitting up there by itself.
Right.
It's like it's, it's gonna be, like a hat on top, it's even more of a slope kind of something to not look like it's just a little
Yeah.
open up.
Yeah.
But it may not be seen.
Looks like the top of the stairway to a room.
Does. It is more, it is a more industrial kind of structure. I lived across the street from this property, it was always fascinating.
I mean, with this going into the one probably barns full. It's a pretty nice property as well.
Any other questions coming?
Um, just, I, I assume you don't have any issue with removing the dormers on the front of seven sixty, or nothing, sorry, dormers, the shutters on the front of seven sixty-two Pearl, their one's already fallen down, they look plastic. Is that?
Don't look at it.
If they're not, uh, they're so
Yeah.
you're rid of them all.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll remove those and then.
But what if they're forty years old?
Is that good?
Yeah.
It's good.
Um, and then the dormers, what are your thoughts on the dormers of that, uh, of, of, uh, thirty Columbus? Um, I know that was a big ask, I think, too, is that the long shed dormer, so I just.
The roof material?
The existing is asphalt shingling.
Is the okay, so all the existing paving, you actually are putting some landscaping, kind of buffer around.
Yeah, yeah, and it can get some green space, but we will still keep six parking spaces, so it's fully barbed, but.
Be a little condo association.
Yeah. Yeah.
South dormers like fourth.
See page thirteen of what the floor plan is doing, why it's driving.
Yeah, I see that.
That's he pauses.
Talk about fifty percent of the roof space, we're, we're off the ten percent. There's something about this roof is kind of hot to potty as well.
And you get like that, almost a storefront entrance.
Yeah.
Yeah. They both intrusion more.
And we, we would open that, that current door on there that's facing Pearl, uh, it's there, but it's walled over on the inside, so we'll be opening that back up. Um, so that's sort of side entrance that you use now that you're seeing under the porch will be more of a side entrance like pat, back patio type, back porch type of thing. Um, which is, I think, yeah, more appropriate, I would guess.
Sad to see it come to that.
Okay, great, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, old business is the agenda.
Bill, you have a prepared paper.
I get outside of this. Get this one to me now. Okay. Alright, uh, their motion to adjourn?
I look to adjourn.
Second question on the motion?
Anything to note?
Oh, 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 there was a, a comeback crap. But they're not here. Um.
Oh, we probably.
Item ten GV two three oh four oh five.
Move. Continue.
So, okay. To you about right.
So I went to the, uh,